Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. Welcome to the November 14th Business Meeting of the Webster Board of Education. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) To the flag of the United States of America and to the right where it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, say that loud. Okay, can we first have a motion to move out of executive session? Moved by Jan. Second by Linda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to approval of the agenda. I don't believe we have any changes to the agenda. And student liaisons. Hi, Sam. Welcome. Please come forward. If you want to grab your name tags. Thank you, ladies.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lyba Khan and it's my pleasure to be here tonight in front of you. To give you a little rundown of what's been going on since the last time I was here, Schrader has just endowed a successful end to our first marking period. To give you a little insight into some of Schrader's successes, today we had seniors Anna Hewlett, Jordan Concordia, and Lindsay Rieger sign for colleges for their sports. Speaking of fall sports, we are almost all done with our fall sports. Student Sierra Duty will be going to states and our girls varsity soccer team just had a successful season, ending it off with co-sectional champions. Soon, we will be doing our Rochester event where we have eight selected students from Monroe County meet with others to discuss events and such on. This year, we have a successful donation cycle going on. We've had our toy drive, which was a school success. The seniors ended up raising 75 toys alone and have won a senior lock-in. We had an incredible successful food drive going on at the moment with Mrs. Burgess and her class. And senior captains of the Thanksgiving donation baskets, Max Parmley and I, are raising 20 baskets for the families at Mount Hope Family Center. Our teacher, Mrs. Gatsby, has helped with having a very successful Empire State Games for the physically challenged. And our AP Gov teacher, Mr. Eckler, is taking his students to Cherry Ridge tomorrow to talk to elderly's about politics, which will be fun and interesting. Senior Ron Casavino had just had a successful trip to Florida at the National Association for Music Education, and she attended it for National Choir. Mrs. Hamm has brought us that our speech and debate team edged at McQuade at City Honors and both high-scoring schools at the Schrader Tournament. Schrader ended off with receiving first place. Mrs. Miller reports how all computer science students are participating in the online Burbus Challenge, which is an international contest that evaluates problem-solving skills based on computers, sorry, based on computational thinking. From Mrs. Debaco, we get that there's a Disney Prism concert going on at Schrader and there's a jewelry fundraiser right in the main lobby. Thank you.
All right. So, good evening, everybody. I was a little disappointed this Tuesday, I gotta say, Mr. Gomina. We eluded the Bobcat. You know, as many kids that put ice cubes in the toilet, inside-out pajamas, spoons. Okay, okay, I'll hold you to that. All right. And I'd also like to thank you for the later start times because I personally get to sleep until seven, which is a beautiful thing, let me tell you. All right. So, anyway, our first marking period ended as kids are applying to college and doing scholarships and finishing up their sports. And we also have coming up the Webster Thomas High School 12th Night Play by, it's William Shakespeare, and performances will run the 21st, 22nd, and 23rd at 7:30 PM. And general admission tickets are $8 and they're sold in the cafeterias, so all the kids can get them if they would like, and you can also find them online. So, if any of you guys are going, you can get those tickets there. And our Geotech class actually built the set for that, for our play, which I think is really cool because usually we have some parents that come and help out and make sets, but we actually have our own students making the set for our own student play, which I think is pretty cool. And we also have on the 25th, the Night of a Thousand Men that is coming up, which is also a big hit. And also tomorrow, we have the First Rochester Area Art Summit geared towards senior AP art students and art college-bound juniors. We currently have over 200 students signed up from 11 local high schools. And this event is tomorrow from 9:15 to 1:45, where students will participate and watch four presentations and go to workshops, and they're all run by local artists. And they will speak about their artwork, art-making process, their career, life journey, so they'll really set up these kids for an awesome future. And Webster Thomas has also been selected as New Week's Top 5,000 STEM High Schools. And this is a part of America's best high schools in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, and it recognizes schools that offer skilled teachers who keep up with developments in these fields and create dynamic learning environments to engage our students. And one of those great programs is the Geotech. Yes, I agree. We have sheds all around, you know, like I'll live in one of those, you know? Yeah, the little tiny houses, that's perfect. All you need is a sink and toilet, I think, you know, right? Maybe a stove, a Bunsen burner. All right. Continuing.
We missed you, Sam.
I missed you, too.
My parents are so proud right now.
Oh, yes. Look, my daughter's on TV making jokes about toilets, oh, boy. All right, so, anyway, swimmers are still participating in the state meet a week from Friday, the 22nd, and field hockey lost in their sectional final, girls volleyball lost to Fairport, and boys volleyball lost to Fairport. But hey, we still, we still have good hopes and we're moving on to winter sports. And scrimmages for these winter season will begin in about two weeks, and we have tryouts and all that starting. And so Dana Witty and Austin Showan were selected as Titan athletes for the month of November. And yeah, that's all I have for you. I've missed you guys. I'm glad to be back and I hope I gave everybody a laugh tonight.
Thank you, ladies, very much for being here. We appreciate it. You get applause, all right. That could be a first. Next, I don't know, do we have a liaison from WTA?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. That was awesome. Oh, say Mrs. Stall, Lori Craft. Schrader, way to go. You guys are in there. Now I get to report.
Welcome.
Hello, everyone. Hello, everyone. I know most of you from different things. I teach with your son, I've been, you taught with you. Do I, I get a name tag? Yes.
We got a Mont.
Might as well put it up, right?
Thank you. I am Joan Bardonis, for those who don't know. I work at Webster Thomas. I work with, Kyle and I have been team teaching for co-teaching for four years now, going on five, and we do English. It's been wonderful. Not gonna go anymore there. Just, I will be the WTA liaison, and I have some wonderful things to report about what teachers have been doing around this community. I first want to start with the fact that although we're the Webster Teachers Association, our school psychologists, our school counselors, our nurses, our occupational therapists, our speech and language therapists, and pathologists are all part, our social workers are all part of our strong union. And it takes all of us. They rather, to be very honest with you, they rather shine the light on students, like Sam and her cohort, over at Schrader. The girls did a fabulous job telling you what's going on. It always aston's us, but tonight, I am going to take a few minutes and make the light shine on some of the teachers in this county, some teachers in this area and community. In an opening report to you, I would like to revisit last month's presentation by Neil Flood and the other members of the team who create a plan for the unimaginable. In a calm, professional manner, they shared what would happen if the unthinkable were to take place. Several times during last month's presentation, they noted, "It is the teachers, it is the staff that are with our children." As WTA members, we know you have entrusted us that if anything were to happen, we would do everything in our power to keep our children safe. We will reinforce to them that you are coming and will surround them with as much compassion and love as possible within those moments and the aftermath. It is with a deep sense of gratitude and appreciation that we thank the team for creating an extensive plan, for sharing information not only at the board meeting, but over the last five to 10 years, for answering questions, tough questions, that we keep asking, and as our unwavering commitment to our students only gets stronger. I think it's very important to note the people, the faces that will be in front of our children if the unspeakable were to happen. On much better note, our elementary WTA members are working tirelessly to help our students transition to new times. It is those who work at State Road, Schlegel, DeWitt, Clem, Clem South and Clem North, Plank North and Plank South, who are working daily with our pre-K to 5th grade students, helping them adjust to their internal clocks. Our elementary WTA members helped instill at a very young age a sense of what it means to be valued and important as a learner. These feelings deepen as time goes on, and as a result, years after leaving elementary school, they always return. It is these WTA members who are a major part as to why high school students return years later to volunteer at their former elementary schools, often in high school community service based clubs. Opportunities for volunteering are posted and sign-ups are filled within hours because students want to go back and give back. Middle school, our 8th graders just got back from Washington. Thanks to the continued support and the volunteering of time for WTA members, our students continue to explore the nation's capital by making memories with each other and allowing the existing connections that they have with staff and students to grow even stronger. Some of these WTA members include Serena Schmamberger, Jen Wilson, Matt Cohen, Amy Spadoni, Kim Eppek, Dana Bergeri, Janelle Shug, Janice Caruso, Tim Hamilton, Jen DeWitt, Renee Wall, CJ Potter, Lisa Bolick, Stacy Rizzuto, Denise Warren, Kate Smith, Wendy Walser, Dan Marcello, Tony Lynn Swenson, Lisa Liley, Beth Brishurs, Kate Orbecker, Jane Morelli, Mark Turner, Julie Simons, Jen Williams, Jerry Beckins, Jean Farrell, and Scott Lansky. To those members, we thank them for their continued efforts in making this trip possible. High school? Well, Sam led the charge. Our high school WTA members, our students are applying, and our members, our high school teachers have written to date over 650 letters of recommendation. Over 100 teachers, psychologists, counselors, union members have written those 650 letters of recommendations for our students. Hopefully, in January, I'll get to report back on a couple of people who are going where. Those letters will continue. It's always fun when you get the kid running in on a Wednesday, asking for his letter Friday morning. As well as students asking for letters of recommendation, kids spend countless hours with staff members going over their own personal essays because they want to be the best they can in that letter. And they know they can go to those teachers they had in 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade, even 12th grade as early as the year is, to ask for guidance and support, and they will be there, sometimes eating lunch. This past weekend, 40-plus union members spent seven hours on a Saturday, a Saturday, at the Skirball Family Autism Conference. WTA members heard valuable information about how schools can support students and parents. One presenter shared his personal journey as a person with autism. Others tried to attend, but it was sold out. Our WTA Community Outreach Center, our chair, Dan Crowley, has been incredibly busy. On opening day, our WTA president shared the numerous events that we have been going to and coordinating. Community Arts Day, Fireman's Parade, Polar Plunge, First Books. After putting thousands of books into children's hands, there were more books to contribute. In lieu of having these books stored, the decision was made to share them with SOTA's Central School District. SOTA Superintendent Nelson Keis was overwhelmed with the generosity of our Webster Teacher Association. Keis thanked the WTA for sharing the wealth, the wealth that literacy brings to a district. He notes in his thank you letter, "Please know how appreciative we are. Improving literacy is a priority goal this year, and our friends in Webster just gave us a huge boost." Additional events include participation in the Breast Cancer Walk, the proud donations and delivery of over 30 boxes that were packed with cereal, canned fruit, plastic fruit cups, and non-perishable milk to our backpack program. Our union looks forward to continuing these community events and reaching out. Early September, on September 11th, Eric Thurly, our high school social studies teacher, eloquently delivered a 9/11 speech on the morning show. He strongly encouraged the dialogue that needs to continue surrounding this significant day in our history. He opened with making us aware that our students, our seniors who have just graduated, were newborns when that tragic day happened. He reminded us, Eric reminded us all that today, our actions and charitable service activities honor the victims of the terrorist attacks. They pay tribute to the many who serve in response to the attacks, and they help to rekindle the spirit of unity in America and in Webster. Let September 11th serve as a reminder to view each other as neighbors, not as strangers, and envision what our society might look like if we worked more closely together to solve all problems. Students listened to his voice. If you haven't seen it, I would take a few minutes and watch it. It was unbelievable. Thank you, Kathy. I know you were part of that. In addition to our WTA members' tribute to 9/11, we also thank all the service members that have served formally from our WTA. We appreciate their service. And as I come to conclusion of my first report, I share with you, the Webster Board of Education, words of a WTA colleague of mine, Celine Geary. She shares a combination of her pearls of wisdom sprinkled with a little bit of Bill and Ted. Every week, she reminds her kids, her students, every week, "Give your best self your best chance. Be excellent to each other." Thank you.
Thank you so much, Joan. We appreciate hearing from you. Appreciate. And I don't know, do we have Central PTSA? Do we have a representative this evening? Okay. Next item on the agenda, visitor speaking time. We, just to share our policy briefly, the Board of Education invites the public to comment on matters regarding the school district. The public comment section of the meeting is a time for the Board of Education to listen. As a courtesy, we ask that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Comments naming specific personnel should be addressed privately or in writing to the Board in order to protect individuals' rights. Matters that would infringe upon student privacy will not be addressed in this public forum. We know that we have several speakers this evening, and as I announce your name and the order that you call to reserve your time to speak, please come forward and identify yourself. Thank you, Sarah.
Okay. My name is Sarah Korinski. I'm a parent of two elementary students in Webster, and I'm the founder and monitor of the Facebook group called Webster Parents Opposing Start Time Changes. I'm here tonight to express to the Board my continued frustration with the new start times and how I feel that you, the Board of Education, along with Mr. Gomina, rushed the decision without ample feedback from elementary families. Many members of the Facebook group, with over 300 members and growing each day, know the root cause of the problem is how the time change was forced through without ample community discussion and the tactics used to block the community out of the ongoing concern for our elementary children and those responsible for them. District-wide, elementary families feel our voices weren't heard. With your sample size of 30 parents that were selected, there was limited representation from elementary families. We didn't receive a survey or questionnaire from our school or the district to give feedback if we weren't able to participate in the focus groups. There was not a vote or a discussion, or even just a discussion of one. It's shameful for a decision to be made that impacts everyone without adequate feedback. I'm an elementary parent and member of the community that you represent. I am here to let you know that there are many people who do not like the start time change. We're actual families who are living with this every day. We are raising children in a fast-paced world. Many families are single or have two working parents, and time spent at home is less and less. I find myself searching for the right balance for my kids. Their overall health and happiness is the main focus of my life. An early start time puts so much pressure on elementary kids and families. Our mornings are rushed and our evenings are worse. My kids have to be in bed by eight in order to get enough sleep for their 6:00 AM wake time. There is barely enough time to sit down for a family dinner, talk about our day, and spend any quality time before the bedtime routine starts. There's occasional homework, bath time, and reading to squeeze in before lights out. We have had to choose our evening activities carefully so that we aren't home too late. Over and over again, I've heard that so many families love having kids home early. Well, my kids aren't home early. My kids are spending three hours a day in daycare. That's after a full day at school. We are family like so many others in Webster that doesn't have the luxury of having a parent at home. Daycare is a huge expense for us, and I do not think the school district should force already strained working parents to sending their children to daycare more than absolutely necessary. Has anyone looked into the effects of extended time in daycare on younger children? It's real and it exists. Unlike the studies on early start times for elementary kids, there's almost zero research on the effects of early start times on elementary students. It hasn't been studied like it has for the middle and high school students. I can't deny that it seems great for our older students. I've heard it from my own family and friends. But where is the information for the younger students? Just because the trend is focusing on older students doesn't mean you should assume that our youngest students are not negatively affected. Why does it feel like you are robbing Peter to pay Paul? Why do our elementary kids need to be the guinea pigs in this experiment? There are also the unintended consequences that the start time change has caused. Activity period for elementary students has been delayed, busing is a huge issue, and teachers at school seem stressed by the lack of logistics. The stories of two separate elementary students who were left on the bus because they fell asleep, or how the schools are on lockdown after school because of wonder care. There are less clubs offered, and the community and parents can't access the buildings until after wonder care is closed. Or how about little kids having to stand outside on a snowy, dark morning in hopes a tiny blinker will keep them safe? To sum this up, myself and many others in this community want you to hear that we do not like the way this time change was handled. We need you to listen to your entire community. Make the start times later for all of our students. Do not ignore the needs of elementary families and students. I urge you, ask the tough questions to the superintendent and to be willing to hear that flip-flopping start times might not be exactly what your community wants. Send out a survey to every member in the community, see what the real consensus is. Listen and do what's best for all students. Lastly, to our Board of Education members, you're an elected representation of our Webster community and our voice, and myself and many families don't feel you're listening or have considered our concern in your decision to change the start times, which only benefit our older students. Lastly, I want to leave you with these viewpoints. Remember that all students need to be considered and benefit from school board decisions. Please consider adjusting the start time to 8:20 AM for elementary students next year. Create an online and paper survey for families of all grade levels to gather real feedback on how this is affecting families and kids. And lastly, let's live true and really become one Webster. Thank you.
And next, we have Jason Crisafulli.
Hello, my name is Jason Crisafulli, and this is my second time addressing the Board about the start time changes. After last month's speech, I received a round of applause from the teachers' union. That should tell you all something, that a majority of your teachers are not for this time change. After listening to other people speak, I feel a majority of them were asked to speak in support of the time change. Here's an example of it. A week before Halloween, my son asked if the 31st was on a weeknight. When we told him it was, he says, "Maybe we shouldn't go out. We have to get up early in the morning for school." Tell me, what eight-year-old says that? No one. The morning after Halloween, the line for drop-off at our school was extra long because parents were letting their children sleep in. Unacceptable. Many people are reporting behavioral problems that were not an issue in years past. Children falling asleep at 6:30 PM because they're tired. Not okay. Usually Friday nights are for staying up a little bit later. Many kids are going to bed on their own at 8 o'clock. This isn't, this isn't normal behavior. The Facebook group that Sarah is part of, Webster Parents Oppose to the Start Time Changes, a lot of people that maybe wouldn't comment have, you know, put comments on there. My wife took all those comments, put them on into Word, and gave those to Larry Wall. I believe Mr. Gomina and Mrs. Gorowski also got them. It was 23 pages long. Mr. Gomina and Mrs. Gorowski met with my wife and Sarah Korinski, and he admitted that he knew tardiness would be up on the elementary level. This disregard for our youngest learners is absolutely absurd. After speaking with Larry Wall, who was in charge of the study on start time changes, he asked me why it didn't become part of the study group. From what I heard, the group was of 30 people, and it was pretty selective who you guys have chosen to represent the whole community. 30 people in the size of Webster for the parents and students impact is a pretty small group. I believe that the study was sped up and it was not really executed in a great manner. I believe that this change should have, at a minimum, had a survey done before deciding about the start time change. And now a survey should be done as well anonymously, so people can actually, actually think about it and actually tell you exactly what they mean. In closing, I just wanted to say that the Board is an elected position, and we, the taxpayers, aren't happy with the time change, and something needs to change.
Thank you. Next is Andrea Fritz. Is she present? Okay, she may not be. Carrie McMahon. Thank you, welcome.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Carrie McMahon, and I'm a parent of three children here in the district, as well as a high school math teacher in a nearby district. I'm here to tell you how I
Next is Andrea Fritz. Is she present? Okay, she may not be. Carrie McMahon. Thank you, welcome.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Carrie McMahon and I'm a parent of three children here in the district, as well as a high school math teacher in a nearby district. I'm here to tell you how I support, how supportive I am of the new district's time change. My youngest is at State Road Elementary School. He, like many children his age, is an early riser, so it has been no issue for him to be ready for the bus by 7:30 each morning. He actually makes regular comments that he's angry with himself when he is not the first one up. He slept until 8:30 this weekend and he vowed that that was not going to continue. In the past, it was our older children walking down the street in the dark to a group bus stop very early in the morning. It made me nervous, especially when the roads were snowy and there were no sidewalks on our street. Our elementary-age children have always had a safe driveway to stand in with a parent present due to their age, whereas our secondary children wait outside without parental supervision in the road at an intersection of two streets. Very dangerous. With the now-later start time for our older children, they will never be standing on the road in the dark with the possibility that drivers do not see them in time to avoid hitting them. Childcare has not been an issue for us this year. Our childcare simply needed to be switched from needing before-school care to needing after-school care. We even have some friends that no longer need childcare at all due to the change. It was a unique situation for each group and from discussions with my own friends, some people made out and some people didn't. My older children struggle with the earlier start times in the past. The extra hour of sleep has not only improved the morning routine but has alleviated a lot of stress on those nights that they just simply couldn't fall asleep because of their internal clocks. We maintain the same bedtimes as we always have in the past, but that urgency to fall asleep immediately is no longer present. The new start time truly supports all of my children's natural sleep patterns. I know that there is sufficient data to support the benefits of the later start times for our older children. I speak to you with a unique perspective as a parent and as a secondary math teacher with over 20 years of teaching experience. I personally see my own students outside of this district struggle early morning with their attention and their focus. And those are the students that are taking our Regents exams and determining scores in the success of our school district. I'm so glad that our district has chosen to put our students' needs before potential parent inconveniences. Thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to voice my opinion on this matter.
Thank you. And next we have Christine Noeth Abely. Good evening.
Hi Christine.
Good evening, everyone. How are you? Thank you for letting me come to speak. I am here to speak and to share my personal experiences with the early start time and I have 30 years of experience in education. I'm going to speak to, as a parent, who had children who attended both early and late elementary schools, as a former teacher in both early and late elementary schools, and as an administrator in both early and late elementary schools. As a parent, I always appreciated the early start time. My kids were always up and ready to go and I loved being able to have them home in the afternoon and they could get to go outside and play and we had time for evening and family activities. I know when they were in high school, dragging them out of bed by the toes in the morning was never fun and that was difficult for them. They had late evenings, they participated in sports and in plays, so getting up in the morning was very difficult. And when I told them this year that we were going to an early start time for elementary kids and later for high school, they said, "Wait, why aren't we back in high school?" Because they are grown and gone now. As a teacher, I had the opportunity to teach both in early and late schools. Our children are just fresher in the morning when they're young and it is always much more beneficial for them and they weren't leaving early for appointments. Parents are able to get doctors and dentist appointments and those kinds of things after school, which was, it always helps kids if they can be in school for the full time. I have not, as an administrator, seen a drop in attendance. The kids are there, we don't have any more tardies, and in terms of behaviors, the first two months of school, I had not one bus write-up. Not one, yeah. And Mrs. Strigge could appreciate that, we used to work together. And since then, I have had two for the entire year. There were days when we would get more than three. So that has been a huge improvement. And just behaviorally overall, I see that the students are much, like I said, fresher in the morning and our youngest learners are not so tired at 3:30 in the afternoon because they're done at two and they are happy and ready to go all day long. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Mr. Jeff Eckler.
No.
I don't have a sign. I'm not, I don't give a sign. You got a pen? For you guys that don't know, I know a lot of people know me, my name is Jeff Eckler. I have a different, a unique perspective on this because I teach here at Trader. I teach social studies. I am a parent of two kids in the elementary school buildings. Right now, they go to Plank North and I coach in the district. So I spoke, I think, last February at the board and I was kind of excited to see how the start time changes and I think, to respect all the speakers who just spoke before me, here at Trader, one of the classes I teach, not well, but I teach it, is Citizens in Action and it's a public policy class. And, you know, we use the GRADE acronym to evaluate public policy. Thank you for you guys for this decision because you've kind of given me a convenient way to start that class for the last couple of years. But, you know, I always tell the students, you know, you got to find what the goal of the policy is. I think there's common ground here for all of us to know that we're in this for all kids. And I would like to honor and hope the board honors, you know, the things that Sarah brought up. The concerns of the community members are real. My two kids are fine. My son, not so much. My daughter is making breakfast in the morning. I don't know if they've had any bus incidences. We don't have the data. We need it from you guys. The high school has been amazing. That's the only way I can describe it. And it's been amazing because this was almost a two-hour swing. My teaching career began at 5:15 AM and when I became a parent, I had to make sure they had lunches and somebody took care of the kids. And I would be walking in with my students at 7:15, 7:20 to try to teach sometimes three classes in a row. And, you know, my friends now that are concerned about the start time and they're not, they don't love it either, they're struggling with their kids, my goddaughter's on the floor, my buddy sends me pictures of her. I feel for him. And I remind him though, I go, "You're mad about 7:10 in the morning pickup." The high school students were there at 6:15, 6:30, 6:45. I saw an elementary bus route this morning though that was 6:45 in Webster Manor, I think. Like, that's not acceptable. I don't know how to fix this. I know the busing is tough. But it seems like we all kind of want kids to start school later. I don't know, the elementary school kids, my kids like having the afternoons. I don't know that everybody does. I don't have the information. And so I hope, I really hope that you guys spend time in an elementary school building, if you haven't already, in the morning. And I hope that you try to find the people who are struggling. Don't try to find the people you agree with. I tell my students to do that. That's new for me. I'm not used to that. And at the same time, I tell the people who, you know, have elementary kids and who are hurting right now, like, you know, find the high school kids. I've seen the Facebook posts, "Sarah, thanks for accepting me as a member." You know, and they kind of say things like, "This high school kid told me this." And I'm like, "That's not data. It's not." And we need, you know, I'll be happy to do surveys in my class, I'll be happy to bring students in and see what they think. I'd like to know if the mental health of our high school students referrals goes down this year. I want to know that. So I hope we have a plan in place, you know, that when we revisit this, you know, next September or whatever it is, that we're seriously looking at everything we can do possibly to really make this work. Because I'm seeing it work on a lot of my levels and I know it's not working for everyone and I hope we can kind of move forward from there. So, that's it.
Thank you for being here. Next we have Maureen Daler Dean. Is she present? And finally, Dr. Margaret Callahan.
Thank you, Dr. Callahan.
Hi, thank you for being here.
So, for those who don't know me, I'm a general pediatrician. I'm a Webster grad and I am more recently functioning as one of the school district physicians for Webster. So I was asked to comment on the medical sort of evidence related to sleep and school start times for children. So, some of this may be old news for many of you, but I just thought I'd kind of start from the beginning. When we talk about sleep requirements for kids, elementary students, we're talking about six- to 12-year-olds in general, on average require between nine and 12 hours of sleep at night. Teenagers, 13 to 18, are requiring somewhere between eight and 10 hours, but their requirements are more specific to time of day. So, as far as sleep medicine is concerned, teenagers, as they head into and through puberty, secrete melatonin to tell them to get tired later in the evening and they build up sleep debt slower. So, they don't get as tired even waking up at the same time as an elementary kid until much later. And so, they sort of have a delayed circadian rhythm that many of you have heard of, meaning that they tend to be night owls who benefit more from later bedtime and wake time. There are lots of medical benefits to getting adequate sleep. So we know that for anyone, getting the appropriate amount of sleep improves your attention, it results in fewer behavioral problems, you have an improvement in both short and long-term memory, better emotional regulation, improve mental health, and better physical health outcomes. And that really is across all of our health systems. Something to note is that regularly sleeping more than the recommended hours is also associated with adverse health outcomes like high blood pressure and diabetes and mental health problems, obesity, metabolic dysfunction. And so there is sort of a sweet spot of how much sleep children should get. There are lots and lots and lots of studies about the negative impacts of insufficient sleep in kids. We know that chronic insufficient sleep is associated with poor school performance, increased obesity, metabolic dysfunction like high blood pressure and type 2 diabetes, cardiovascular morbidity, increased symptoms of depression and anxiety, increased vulnerability to stress, an increase in self-harm behaviors, suicidal ideation and suicide attempts. Teenagers in particular have increased risk-taking behaviors when they don't get regular sufficient amount of sleep. There are increased athletic injuries and an increased motor vehicle risk that is highest in males aged 16 to 24. We also know that students who have pre-existing specific medical problems like ADHD, autism, anxiety, depression, developmental delays are more sensitive to sleep deprivation than their otherwise healthy peers. And so they're a higher-risk population for getting insufficient sleep. When we look at the medical evidence for school start times, it's not great. There's just not a lot published out there. It's a relatively new field. There's really a strong body that's building, supporting later school start times for adolescents. The overwhelming recommendation is to start high school at 8:30 or later based on the circadian rhythm changes. And there have been several articles in the last two to three years showing improved attendance, improved mental and physical health in our adolescents, and improved graduation rates for high schools that have a later start time. The evidence for elementary students is not great, although there's more being published every month. In general, what we see out there is that earlier start times for our elementary kids aren't associated with significant positive or negative outcomes. It's sort of neutral. There was one study that I could find that was an observational study in Kentucky that elementary districts that had earlier start times, not as a change, but just in general, noted more behavioral problems in their elementary kids. But there were a lot of confounders and those schools tended to be geographically clumped. So I don't know that you can really draw any conclusions based off of that. Last month, in Sleep Health, there was an interesting sort of experimental study that looked at a before and after in the Fairfax School District in Virginia of swapping, similar to what you guys have done. So they had a 50-minute advance in their middle and high school kids and a, or a 50-minute delay and then a 30-minute advance in their elementary kids. So, the elementary schools were starting at 7:30 and they noted no changes and they were studying sleep, mood, self-regulation, physical health, and safety. And the delayed start time for the older kids was associated with a decreased prevalence of low mood, improved drowsy driving, and better numbers in terms of skipping breakfast. When we're looking for evidence specifically for our elementary kids, which is really what's lacking, one other study that was useful for me was a school district that studied elementary kids, grade three through five, before and after a start time advance from 8:20 in the morning till 7:45 in the morning. And then, in this particular study, the students that were entering third grade had experienced a larger shift because they were moving buildings. So they went from 9:10 to 7:45 AM. And in that year, the third graders reported actually an increase in average sleep time of 24 minutes. The fourth graders had a decrease in average sleep time of four minutes and the fifth graders had a decrease in sleep time of nine minutes. So, overall, you know, the older kids, that probably is negligible clinically. And the third graders had increased sleep and they didn't comment much on kind of where that came from. But, there's not a lot else out there. And so I think this is, this is a rapidly evolving field and new things are being published each month, which are worth paying attention to. As far as our practice, so I work at Panorama and we see a lot of Webster and Penfield families. We have received overwhelmingly positive feedback from our middle and high school students. Parents are routinely saying, "We don't battle in the mornings anymore." "She's finally eating breakfast. I've been trying to make this happen for four years. This was the best change for our family." The teenagers adore it. They think it's like the best thing ever. And I had a lot of elementary parents over the summer who commented on how nervous they were for the change. Since then, most of the feedback that I and my partners have gotten has been pretty neutral. So, like, some people like it, some people have had to struggle to find childcare, but on a personal level, I haven't gotten a lot of negative comments from parents impacting their child specifically. One mom that I take care of has an elementary student in the district. She also works in the district and she said that for her own child, it's been a struggle. But, but working in one of the buildings, the change that she's seen has been incredible. That kids are arriving awake and ready to go in the morning and on a building level, she's seeing a lot less problematic behavior. That's really all I can say, unless anyone has questions.
Thanks.
No problem.
Thank you, Margaret. Have a nice evening. Now, moving on in our agenda to instructional reports, we have superintendent's report.
Thanks, Tammy. So, I wanted to share some of the latest data poll regarding attendance and tardies and behavioral concerns. We had briefly touched upon that during our talk two weeks ago with Ms. Chrisifouli and Ms. Korinski. And, so this is, this is elementary, the first nine weeks of school. This is their attendance. Blue is last year, pink is this year. And you can see the basic... And you can see the basic or the average change is probably about 0.8% increase in attendance. There are two weeks where the attendance last year was a little bit higher than the attendance this year. Week eight, you can see that the blue bar is higher than the pink. But for the most part, you can see the attendance is on par or a little bit higher at the elementary level. If we go to the next slide, the secondary level, when you look at, week one was two days and it was, you know, it's two days. But when you look at weeks 2 through 9, every single week, it is at least a 1% to 2% increase. And a 1% to 2% increase of approximately 3,500 kids across six grade levels is pretty significant. And again, when you think of a 2% increase on a 180-day cycle or 180-day school year, you know, it's an extra five to six days that perhaps that a child is in school. So, that's attendance. When we look at tardies, the bars on the left, the graph on the left, are total tardies to first block or to the beginning of school. And I can't remember what our cutoff was for a tardy. It may have been like 10 to 15 minutes. I might have to go back and look. But the total number of tardies is down from 6,300 to 5,600. And when you look at the tardies per level, as Tammy and I had mentioned in our meeting last week, the tardies at elementary, you can see for the month of September, were up 47. And for the month of October, they were up 23 and 53, 76. So, those tardies did go up. And I did not base this on building level, at each building. I have a feeling that there are some buildings that have a little bit, that have more tardies than others. But again, it's a big shift. We went from 9 o'clock to a 7:50 or 7:40 for the two norths. And at the secondary level, the tardies are significantly down. And again, we would hope that that would be the case. And Jeff, I don't know if you teach first block, but if you do, I'm hoping that you see that most of, you know, you don't find the same number of tardies that you did in years past. So, that's the number of tardies. And again, K-12, the number of tardies are down. Number of elementary behavioral referrals, we really weren't sure what we were going to find here. And but for the first six weeks of school, so we've been in school nine weeks. These are the first six. But you can see the number of elementary behavioral referrals with all seven buildings, down 123 to 75. 25, 48, 48, 123, 50. So, you're probably looking at about a 40% decrease. The academic ineligibility. So, this was pulled, these are the total number of students that when we polled eligibility or ineligibility the first two times, the number of students last year that were ineligible were 60 or that were in the danger of being ineligible were, that was 60 in 18, 19. It was really the fall of 18. And this year, it's not quite half, but a little bit more than half, probably 55% of that number. So, that's a really good data set as well. And I think, is there one more slide? No, that was it. So, I just wanted to make sure that we showed that the latest data. And I know that, you know, one of the key takeaways following the conversation that we had with Ms. Kerensky and with Ms. Chris Foley was that sense of making sure that I personally, and I'll just speak for myself, make sure that we honor and value and address the concerns that were brought up. And that, you know, as, and I forget who had said, you know, make sure that we're out of, that we're not just in a bubble of agreement, that we're out talking with, you know, all kinds of other people that, I think Jeff said, make sure that you're out and trying to get in contact with people that may have a different opinion. And that's why the conversation that we had with Ms. Kerensky and Ms. Chris Foley, that was so important for us because it was eye-opening in some regard. So, we really appreciate that. And that's my report.
Thank you. Okay. And with that, we'll move on to our professional learning update instructional report. And welcome our administrators to come and share with us.
You don't get a sign.
You want me to make you one?
No, it's okay. Jeff will make me one. Well, welcome and thank you guys very much for having us tonight. I'm excited to talk about our annual professional learning update. But before I do that, I want to just take a quick little journey kind of backwards to kind of give you a, just kind of a thought about where we're going this year as a system and where we've been going for the last couple of years as a leadership group. And it really has come to the forefront for us when we look at our vision is that we really want to make sure that we are taking care of all three parts of the vision. And so, this year, you will see a huge focus on the always learning part. And what better way to showcase that than in the professional learning update? I'm excited for the stuff that's in this report that you're going to hear from these three amazing educators here next to me. It's my honor to introduce to you Kate Hesler, Melissa Phillips, and Greg Alquist. All three are very instrumental in the professional learning in our district. I think we have some very unique things happening in this district, very exciting things that are super collaborative, that do actually honor the voices of everybody involved. And I think that's the other key piece. Before I turn it over to Kate to go on to the next slide, our professional learning is not just about our teaching staff, our mental health staff. It's about our administrative staff. It's about our teaching assistant staff. And it's about our teacher aide staff. We're responsible for all of that. And that's why it's exciting because they get to involve themselves in all of our units, in all of our staff and personnel. So, with that being said, I will turn things over to Kate.
Thanks, Brian. So, as Brian said, a lot of our focus this year has been around that always learning part of our vision. And I believe you all have somewhere in front of you a copy of our always learning list of descriptors. And the creation of this list really was a collaborative process over the last one and a half to two years with our leadership team, really coming to the table and asking ourselves, what do we mean by always learning? And what do we really envision that meaning in our classrooms? And so, we started by generating this list of descriptors and with really the goal in mind of leveraging the power of our past shared language documents, like our core beliefs and like our essential skills. Those have been incredibly powerful for our district to ground the work that we do, to kind of inspire us and really kind of keep us going in the same direction. And so, we wanted the same thing to happen with this always learning piece. And when we had created that list and we had really kind of worked through thinking a little bit about that, we knew that a really important step moving forward to the larger community would be to involve our lead teachers. And so, this past summer, all of our building leadership teams came together for a full day with the administrators from the building and all of the lead teachers. And they first began with a deep dive into all seven of those descriptors. And that work was facilitated by our discovery education partner, Albert Dupont, who helped us with the creation of the list the last couple of years. And so, these teachers spent a good deal of time in the first part of their day really getting to know the descriptors, getting to think about what do they look like, what do they sound like, where do we already see some bright spots in our schools that align to these? And then, the next part of the day, they actually worked on a consensus-building process where they thought about all of those different descriptors and thought about where would be a great place for us to prioritize our work in our building to start? Where would be one that we really want to focus on? And so, as a district, we decided that one of our focus areas across all of our buildings would be that standards-based descriptor. And then, those buildings came up with what would be the second one for that building that they could begin this work with and focus on. And so, as it turned out, the result of those consensus-building processes in each of the buildings, it was either the engaging descriptor or the curiosity-driven descriptor that those lead teacher teams chose. And from the professional learning standpoint, that was just really helpful kind of grounding for us to then think about what is the professional learning that our teachers in our buildings are going to want that's aligned to that and what is that we can provide for them aligned to that as well. So, just a little bit more about how these work. We have the descriptor level, which, you know, looks a lot like our core beliefs and essential skills where we have a word or a two-word phrase and then a statement that kind of captures the essence of that descriptor to help illuminate what that means. But we didn't really stop there. We wanted to get to some more specifics as well. So, we took those descriptors and then also built out a number of what we're calling indicators. And so, as you can see, that's a two-column chart. Some statements that we might see that students would be doing and then some statements that teachers might be doing, you know, if that descriptor were kind of present in the learning environment. And so, you can see that's the standards-based one. That's the district-wide focus. And then, we also have the engaging and the curiosity-driven. And we've actually built that out for all seven descriptors. And those are the three that we're focusing on intently for this year. So, it's with that always learning focus that we have built this presentation for you tonight. You will hear about our annual Teachers Teach Teachers Superintendent's Conference Day. You'll also hear about our ongoing professional learning for teachers and our FLIP system and mentoring and induction program that we revamped beginning last year, as well as some of our leadership professional learning. So, with that, I'm going to turn over to Melissa to talk about Teachers Teach Teachers.
Thanks, Kate. No, I have this one. It's hard to believe that we've had our fifth annual Teachers Teach Teachers. Isn't that crazy? So, we're so excited to talk a little bit about the structures in place. It's a great celebration of learning that we look forward to every year. And it takes so many parts of our system to make this day happen. From our building and ground staff that doesn't laugh at me when I call them and say, "I need 20 yoga balls delivered tomorrow morning," to the custodian staff that puts the chairs up in specific arrangements that our facilitators are asking for, our district office staff, of course, our administration and our teachers that are really the heart of the day. So, the planning for this takes about six months. And so, our presenters will put in their proposals in May, kind of leading us to what the sessions will be. And this year, for the first time ever, we've had people that put in proposals according to strands, so topics that were, we wanted to elevate. So, teachers-led sessions around equity and diversity, curriculum and standards, data assessment and goal setting. And that was kind of a way to allow people, as they were having their choose-your-own-adventure of, did they want to spend one day in one cohort of like one topic for the day? Or did they want to get a little bit of everything through the course of their day? And really, that came out of feedback that we got from our teachers over the past couple of years of, we really wanted to maybe spend one day learning about one topic deeply, or I want a little bit of everything. And so, we helped to make that happen. Another really great part of the day is our students that are there. So, our National Honor Society students were there that were tour guides. They were our hostesses with the mostesses that delivered donuts and coffee to teachers in their sessions. And that was a really great celebration. And then, our Schrader Care students had painted kindness rocks that they wanted teachers to take back to spread kindness throughout the community. So, those were really two great places that had students present there. I enjoy seeing former students that I've worked with in the past. One of the really great parts about the day is the focus on compassionately connecting. So, throughout the day, as teachers are attending sessions, there's this kind of passing time and people that are coming together from 11 buildings that they don't know. We also have our student teachers and our substitutes that join us as well. So, we want to make sure that there's kind of this natural community that's there and people feel included and a part of this great celebration. So, we have the goose chase challenge that happens where people can do kind of these little games. And it's a little bit of friendly competition. And WTA and Wila and PTSA and our senior leadership all donated prizes to kind of make that friendly competition, you know, worth something. And it's just, it's a great celebration just to see all that community. And one of, a new part that happened this year was with WTA Cares. And so, they had a very successful food pantry donations that we actually collected over 30 boxes of food for the backpack program on this day. So, it was a great celebration of that. Our keynote speaker this year was Erica Jordan-Thomas. She came to us from Harvard School of Education. And her keynote address was titled, "Leading for Access and Equity." She began her keynote talking to us a little bit about her experiences growing up in Columbus, Ohio and how that's influenced her as a teacher and an educator. The next section really focused on elements or parts of history that focused on inequities. But the last part and the part that was most powerful was really giving us some inspiration on how we can make choices in our classrooms every day that can really mean things focused on equity for our students. And as the keynote ended, there was a line out the door wanting to speak to her directly, asking for her email, her phone number, because they wanted to talk to her more. So, that was a great celebration of having Erica join us on this day. As I said in the beginning, this is our fifth annual. And we, at the end of each day, we do have a ticket out the door because we want to make sure that this kind of choose-your-own-adventure learning is still meeting our needs. And this is, 98% of our staff are saying that this is relevant and on target for their needs. This is the highest success that we've had thus far. So, it's always about like 95, 96, but this year we had 98. But we look really closely at that feedback just to make tweaks and make it even better each year. So, one of the, kind of the final part about Teachers Teach Teachers is the celebration of where it is in the year. So, it's in October, right? So, it's kind of the kickoff of professional learning for us. And one of the greatest parts is that we now have kind of the structure in place where people from 11 buildings can kind of come together. And then, there's kind of, you can learn something, go try things. And now, you have a structured place such as FLIP and other places where you can come back and learn more together. And so, Greg will talk to us a little bit more about FLIP.
Thanks, Melissa. I just wanted to begin, just as we kind of make this transition to the teacher professional learning and the system that we have in place to kind of talk through some of that. And then, obviously, we'll continue on and look at the induction program and then also how we're reaching out and supporting administrators as well. But I wanted to begin just with a word of gratitude. I'm so grateful to be a teacher and to be a leader on this team that's presenting here tonight and to be in this district. It is, it's an honor. And also, I had it in my mind to at least thank a couple of other people and just wanted to mention that especially for the induction program, Dave Swinson has invested a lot of time and energy into that program as well. So, we're grateful for his partnership. And then, our administrative assistant is Daria Perazzi. And she's out back there. And she has been just a huge support for us and made, contributed in multiple ways with ideas and support and encouragement. So, we're just, we're grateful for this team. And that's the sense and the spirit by which we're presenting this evening. So, we began this process three years ago where we wanted to reimagine, re-envision, and relaunch professional learning in our district. And the goal was to empower and equip teachers so that they could make decisions about professional learning. And so, one of the things that we did is repurposed faculty meetings and department meetings. We actually cut, that total body of time was about 20 hours that we were contractually obligated to meet. And we took half of that in an agreement between the WTA and the district leadership. We came to an agreement to repurpose 10 of those hours into what we are now referring to as a flexible learning plan so that teachers could decide what they needed, when they needed it, and how they could have that delivered. And so, what we've seen over the last three years is an extraordinary number of options and opportunities for teachers to identify what they need and to seek out opportunities to be able to reach that. So, just a little bit more about this. Each of us has 10 hours. And if I kind of retrace that, the evolution of those three years, kind of through the three letters of FLIP, the first year was, the emphasis was on flexibility, expanding options, reimagining that professional learning in new ways. And so, we went from kind of a very structured approach to learning to one that opened and widened opportunities significantly. I think that was the focus of year one. Year two was actually about kind of tweaking the system and ensuring that the learning was the center of the work. So, if year one was about flexibility, year two was about learning. And then, I might make the art. And then I might make the argument that this year is about plan, that we're being strategic about that. We're kind of thinking thoughtfully and strategically about what we are doing and the offerings that we're presenting. And one of the ways that we're doing that is that second bullet up there is that we've identified priorities. And in fact, one of the things that we've done is in collaboration with teachers and administrators, we're presenting what we're calling strands, which are targeted learning opportunities for teachers. And teachers and administrators are working collaboratively to offer these throughout the year at various points. And it provides a series of deliberate strategic learning that teachers can opt into. And it's part of our intentional plan to kind of give a structured learning opportunity for teachers over time. And I think one of the other interesting kind of byproducts that we knew would happen but has come and surfaced to the forefront in ways that I don't think we could have quite envisioned was, number one, is about the collaboration that's emerged. And much of that is teams of teachers kind of identifying what they wanted to do and then going after it. I think some of it also has empowered a lot of teachers to actually present to their colleagues. And that's been a wonderful kind of byproduct that we saw immediately emerge within the first two years. And I think the other option that has also emerged is just the variety of opportunities. Many teachers are moving out into the community to take advantage of community learning opportunities. And part of that strategic plan, just as one example, we've sent a team of teachers to do learning in science and so they do that learning and then when they bring that learning back to our district, but they don't just bring it back at a haphazard time, they're actually being very deliberate about using what they learned at the right time when it would support teachers at that moment. So it's about what we want to do, but it's also about delivering it at that right time. Whereas some of that might have been challenging in the past with a faculty meeting or department meeting that was kind of scheduled and maybe it would hit or maybe it wouldn't. And I think the system offers those opportunities in ways that perhaps we didn't quite envision even in the first place. Another way of looking at this and kind of thinking about the rationale for this, for this program was the strategic survey that you can see. And Kate and my role actually began in 2017, in the summer of 2017, right after that strategic survey happened. And the goal of this FLIP system really was to provide opportunity and to allow teachers to kind of take control of their learning. And what we can see is that in our latest strategic survey, we significantly improved that number that had been somewhere around that 55 to 70% range and kind of saw a noticeable jump up forward in this. You can see it in the second part of the strategic survey as well here that provides that opportunity to guide and shape their learning, which again, had been around that 58 to not-quite-80% mark. And then when we took that, that survey again, we see that number jump significantly. And that was affirming to us and I think it speaks to the collaborative nature of this work and how we've seen that success. And I think one other way of kind of measuring this or looking at one other metric is through another set of numbers. I just want to pause on that number. There are two, over 2,100 proposals that were entered into our online catalog last year. Just by way of reference, before this system came, we were lucky if we had 150 entries. So we're seeing at least a magnitude of 10 increase in the number of offerings that teachers can take advantage of. And I think that's something that we're incredibly proud of. And by the way, the other number that's kind of staggering is the number of sign-in sheets that were generated in this process, which speaks to the other change. And Daria handled every one of those pieces of paper. I did not, thank God. We're all better for that. But that is also another reason that this year we've made a switch to an electronic delivery system. So we've removed much of that paperwork so that we're handling it electronically, always looking for ways to improve and to continue to get better in service, our teachers. With that, we'll continue our look with teachers and Kate will kind of continue that look.
So a couple of the structures that we wanted to highlight for you are our learning walks and our peer learning labs. And we started these a couple of years ago. Teachers have engaged in both kinds and both of them are similar in the sense that they offer an opportunity for the professional learning to actually occur within a classroom live with students where the action happens in reality. And so in our learning walks, teachers typically will visit several different classrooms over the period of maybe one class period. And their goal there is really to see kind of a variety of things in action and our always-learning descriptors have offered a helpful grounding point for that this year. So for instance, they may be going in looking for engagement and how are students engaged? What kinds of things are teachers doing to engage students? And then they might visit a variety of different classrooms and then come back and have a debrief session led by a lead teacher, an administrator, or another teacher that is going on the walk so that they can capture some of those takeaways and think, "Oh, you know, I saw that and I really would like to try that. I, you know, maybe I'll go back and ask that teacher a little bit more about what, whatever great thing that they saw in that classroom." So that conversation is a nice way for them to kind of capture that learning. And then in our peer learning labs, same idea in the sense that opening up our practice is a component, but in this case, teachers will go in for an entire class period or entire lesson and see that lesson from start to finish in a teacher's classroom where typically that teacher and that group of teachers that's visiting are all a part of an inquiry project together where they may have done some learning together, perhaps a book study, and they're all trying something together. And then they go visit one of the teachers that's part of that group, come back and debrief again, and then capture some of those takeaways. So that, that option kind of has a before and an after component that also extends that learning. And so like Greg was talking about earlier with the strands and this plan full sequence, that's one example of that. The pineapple, in case that was a puzzle, is that symbol of hospitality. And so that's another thing that we've kind of woven into that to celebrate opening up our practice to our colleagues. And so sometimes you'll see the pineapples hanging on doors and that's a symbol that people are welcome to come in. And you know, we're just seeing that grow and teachers really taking advantage of being able to learn from the expertise that we have here in Webster. So another dimension of our professional learning for teachers that's focused on our new hires is our mentoring and induction program. And Greg highlighted the work that Dave Swinson has done in the collaboration with us in building this multi-year induction program. And I want to highlight another person as well. Erica Ebert has been helpful in just really casting a vision for how we can welcome teachers into the fabric of our district. And so she works alongside Greg and I in supporting the new teachers and as well as the mentors. So some specifics about how we've revamped that program. Last year was the first year that we kind of re-envisioned the induction program. And so now we have teachers being supported beyond just that very first year that they're here in Webster. In previous times, it was kind of one year or maybe not. You know, we were only giving mentors to teachers that it was required by their certification status. And now we're providing a mentor for all teachers as they enter our system, if they have experience or not, and really kind of working through what those differentiated needs might look like. So this year, we have a group of teachers that for the first time ever is in that year-two cohort, as well as our teachers who were hired this past summer who are in year one. And you know, we're working with our mentors to kind of support them in this journey as well. So we have ongoing mentor forums where they're coming together to collaborate with one another, to ask questions, to kind of think about how they can really continue to provide that support for our new hires. Just a couple of pictures there from our orientation week, which many of you were able to attend. So thank you for being there to be part of that welcome for our new staff members. And many of them reflected at the end of the week that they just felt so excited to be here and they had been able to be immersed in the culture and the vision and the mission of the district and were excited to share that they're really thriving in our district as well. And Greg's going to talk through the leadership component.
So we did want to just identify the last part of much of our work, that it isn't just exclusively focused on teachers and staff in the district, but it's also working with our administrators. And I think that one of the points to make is, first off, is that it, this has actually been ongoing work that has been happening, that a lot of Carm's vision for how the retreat actually plays out kind of sets a tone and a vision for the way that much of that learning starts to unfold as a leadership team throughout the year. But one of the things that I'll draw our attention to is that, is those three bullets. And that's not the first time that you've seen this already this evening. And I think it's worth kind of noting that, that standards-based, the equity, diversity, the curiosity and the engagement, those are strands that have been woven through the evening tonight. And I think one of the things I would say is that, that when we designed those strands that we talked about, that series of learnings that teachers could kind of opt into as kind of a design for the, for professional learning, there's almost a parallel structure for administrators that we've been going on. And by way of a simple example, it was just a couple hours ago that there were about 30-plus secondary administrators that were in that back room while this was getting set up here. And we were looking and digging into standards and what is the application of standards in the classroom. And that was parallel work that was being done and connected to that same strand that had been offered in the FLIP model. So in the same way that teachers are learning and being supported, I think it's also exciting that administrators also are learning, are pushing themselves with this, with this idea of being able to support, empower and encourage teachers as well. And I think the last thing that, to say here on this final slide here is that there's an arc to this learning, that it is deliberate, that the arc begins at the leadership retreat where we kind of began that in the same way that Kate and Brian rolled out that always-learning focus with those descriptors. That was one of the first places that we really engaged with those, with, as a wider leadership team and also that equity and diversity focus. And that those then continue throughout the year in leadership meetings like this afternoon, but also continues on in a parallel way with teachers throughout the year. And then one of the interesting things that we have in kind of this deliberate arc to the school year is kind of a mid-year check-in. And that's part of the role that that discovery partnership is taking. Kate mentioned how Albert, the discovery consultant that worked to kind of launch that and help buildings identify those priorities amongst those always-learning indicators. Well, he's going to come back in January and going to continue that work and we're actually going to kind of take a dipstick and see how are we doing and what evidence can we take? And we'll probably engage in learning walks and go around the buildings and see what kind of evidence we actually do have and use that moment as a moment of celebration, but also one of calibration, right? Are there places that perhaps we need to monitor and adjust and then kind of revision? And how are we going to use that last second half of the year strategically and continue to use those, that parallel strands of support for both administrators and teachers? And I think it's that kind of support, it's that kind of re-envisioning and that kind of re-imagining of professional learning that we've been under for the last three years. And I think that all of us are extremely proud to share with you this night. At this point, we'd welcome any of your comments or questions.
I just had a question or more of a thought that I was wondering, over the course of your five years of Teachers Teach Teaching in the FLIP model, have you found an increase in the number of teachers volunteering to participate as an instructor?
Yeah.
Definitely.
Yeah, so we absolutely have. The first year that we offered, it was in January, we had a K-8 day. So I think we, I don't even think we had 100 people that year that we did it. And then the first year that we did it, full-scale K-12, I can't give you the exact numbers, but I know that each year it kind of increases. The other part that happens too is that some teachers have said, "I don't want to present myself, but I'd like to invite a member of the community to come in and have them." And we call that hosting. And so that, we had about 25 people that came in from the community that led sessions that maybe a teacher didn't want to lead, but they had seen in some other fashion that they wanted to attend as well.
I always had a thought that there's so many teachers that have such wonderful things to share but are reticent unless they perhaps get a little encouragement or unless they see that it's a comfortable setting for their peers and their friends, was my thought.
Yeah. I would echo that as well, Jan, and I think I'm out here, but it's a culture that's been growing and it's contagious. And I think once we do have that culture of people knowing that they're going to be supported and that the information that they're giving to their colleagues and they're helping them with is very useful. We're the best experts in so many ways as a staff in the sense of our teaching staff and our administrative staff. We have the experts right here and we cultivated and lifted that in a positive way.
And we appreciate that, sorry. We appreciate many of you coming there. I mean, you've seen that day and can feel that just unspeakable energy that happens when we're celebrating the success of our teachers and staff.
Thank you.
Mike?
We saw an example of your always-learning last week when we did second-grade science lessons for mystery science, which I know is your teacher-teaching teacher, Teachers Teach and Teaching thing. But I have two questions and they both come from the School Board Association that I was at. Now, this might be a little bit future, so I don't know how much you are at. The stand, we're talking about standards-based and New York right now is looking at getting rid, well, I won't say getting rid of, but not using Regents. So how will that affect what is going on?
And as the learning process goes, as the professional learning process goes, is what you're asking, Mike? We'll take that and absolutely run with that as it comes. I think that that's, there's a lot to that question, there's a lot to that discussion. And the most recent discussion I've had with the Monroe County ASIs is that that is, that they are finding, they're recognizing its data that this is a long process and that that's not a quick change. But we do have standards that are constantly changing when it's, whether it's social studies or science or our new next-generation ELA in math. And we've been able to utilize the FLIP model and some of the systems that we have in place to be at the forefront of that and to make sure that we are doing the work with our teachers and for our teachers and really for our students to make sure we're ready for that.
So can I, just one other comment. You know, regardless, if the Regents exams do go away, the standards do not. So in essence, that kind of removes one of the variables, right? I think the other way of saying that or answering that is that when the Regents exams are at their best, they're very much aligned to the standards and will continue to supplement and kind of be in alignment. Where we see some of that dissonance, that would be the opportunity, right? Where if you remove the Regents exam and where there was dissonance, the same question though still remains, how do we best teach those standards? So in essence, I don't think anything changes in terms of the standards and what we want to teach. It just becomes, how do we best do that?
Not only is it how do you best do that, but also the question is, how do you assess it?
That's right.
Which is difficult. Now, another question, which you don't have to answer because I know it's, it might be getting totally off, but at Clem's South, when we talk about assessment, they did a lot of research and they don't use homework. How will professional development deal with the question of homework?
Well, Erin's there. How will professional development handle the question of homework? Well, I think that, you know what? Here's how I would look at that, Mike, is that we have a structure in place that will provide opportunities for our teachers to have conversations. And I think that's going to be the most important part for our teaching staff is to, how are they going to make the changes if there are changes? And how are they going to make them for their classroom? But how are they also going to make them for, you know, what that homework might look like? Because even though Clem's South might not, might have a homework philosophy, let's call it that, it's not necessarily a policy or regulation, but I know that they have a philosophy on that, doesn't mean that they're not encouraging things like reading at home, working on math problems, finding problems and actually offering conversation starters at the dinner table and things like that, that we know our teachers at Clem's South definitely do. So it's not like they are asking kids to go home and shut down, but they're just going home and asking the kids to look at it differently. And that's the type of conversation that I would hope that we continue to have with all of our, of our entire K-12 system. I'll let you guys add anything if that, or Erin, if there's anything I missed there.
All right. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything to say?
No, I just wanted to say with how responsive you've been to the needs and the wishes of our teaching and our staff in its entirety, I should say, the fact that you're... our teaching and our staff in its entirety, I should say, the fact that you're still looking to continuously improve and assess how you're doing is very impressive, is it just that continuous improvement? So you're continuously improving, helping people continuously improve. You know, the loop there, and that's, couldn't ask for anything more.
Well, I want to just jump in with that as well, because it was three years ago that we decided, you know, as a group, and certainly as this leadership team up here, that this was an area that we needed to really focus on.
Yeah, right.
And that was something that I know all of us had that conversation with. And then I think, Mike, you'll remember as well, it was about mentoring next.
Right.
And that we took a strategic approach to that, and now hopefully tonight you're seeing that we have gone at mentoring and our mentoring program, induction program for our newest staff differently. And I think, again, because all of you want to also be part of this always learning piece, and we appreciate the support with that. And I'm so proud of the team up here, but where we're going with professional learning in this district, and that is everybody, from all of our teachers, administrators, and staff.
I think it was when we looked at our metrics that we realized that we had to do something different.
They were saying something to us, absolutely.
I remember sitting there in the summer and saying, we have to do something different so that we get a better response of teachers appreciating and learning something from, you know, their meetings.
Because they were saying that, is it, it was another question in that survey?
Yeah.
That they were saying to us that they wanted to take control of that, and that's what's happened, so.
Yeah, not only helps the students, but helps our staff hopefully enjoy their job a little bit more.
Yes, exactly.
So before the, so before the board takes action on this report, I want to make sure that the four of, the four of them in front of us and Ms. Ebert in the back have really transformed what our mentoring program is like, what our induction program is like, certainly our professional development. Teachers Teach Teachers that Melissa will start to work on like next week, next year.
True.
It really has been, it's night and day, it's night and day. So, but thank you guys for all that you do, it's wonderful.
Absolutely, thank all of you. It has to be not only empowering, but constantly inspirational, because it's energy, it's in motion. It's really wonderful work, we all thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and with that...
I'll make the motion.
Okay, all in favor, accepted your report with gratitude. Thank you all, very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business, we have a tax surchargeary resolution for the Cheney Properties and Webster LLC. And Brian, if you would talk us through that.
Actually, can I just interrupt you guys for one second?
Yeah.
I would be remiss, Daria is back, sitting behind Colleen Armstrong. Without Daria, those four can't do what they do. Because she, she takes care of, you know, hundreds of thousands of something, whether it's pieces of paper or requests, and without her organizational skills and her support of that team, none of this happens. So, Daria, thank you so much.
Thank you, Daria. Thank you all. Okay, if you would walk us through the next resolution.
Sure, the Cheney property is 855 Publishers Parkway. What the resolution is coming to is we've reached an agreement on a tax surchargeary proceeding that they've instituted, dates back to fiscal years. So the settlement will save the district, you know, almost $125,000 compared to what we could have had to pay had we gone to court and litigated the matter. So we thought it was prudent to come to terms and agree. Our refund, based on the reduction assessment to the LLC, is just a shade under $41,000. That's why we have a tax surchargeary reserve for these cases. I believe it was in early September, when I presented to the board, I gave you an overview of all the tax surchargeary cases pending against the district and what those look like. So this will be one less from that list that we looked at two months ago at the start of September. Any questions on?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So is this settlement separate from a settlement that may have taken place with the town?
It's wrapped together. Us and the town do this collaboratively, together.
Did I miss that in here? Or not necessarily?
I probably didn't mention it.
Okay. So will the town be also issuing a refund?
For the previous year, I can't speak to exactly how much, I haven't looked at that, but the settlement should, they're on a different cycle than us, obviously, January 1, so they're 1920.
Right, they've always got to mess things up.
Kind of a little different, how that happens, but yes, they should have one year's under this to pay back refunds as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
Brian?
Yes.
Is this going to start a trend that everybody who owns commercial property in Webster?
This has been a trend that's been going on for when I was a wee little lad in the district.
So five years ago?
This is, I appreciate that, thank you. I'm done here. Unfortunately, I think, Mike, it's very common in towns across New York that have one very large company. And so a lot of the other commercial properties kind of take their lead from what that large company does. Carrier in Syracuse is a perfect example of a large company in one school district, and all the other commercial properties around it kind of go off of that. That's another school district that has a significant amount of tax surchargeary cases against it as well. So, you know, it's, are we unique compared to, say, an HFL or somewhere farther out? Yes, but when you compare us to districts with similar commercial tax bases, this is fairly standard.
Okay, so this is in our best interest to settle this and not fight it?
Correct. Yes.
And is this about what you were thinking, or is it better than what you were thinking?
Better.
Better, yeah, okay. So, yes, so it is good then.
So with that, may we have a motion, please, to accept this resolution? Linda and second by Maria, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. And next, August Treasures Report, Brian?
Nothing, August is probably our least busy month as far as collections and things that are going out. Not a lot is happening in August, we're just ramping up for tax collection season. But the one thing you will notice, it's our lowest cash flow month. So when we do a 12-month cycle, August is always our lowest because there's no state aid, we haven't received state aid for two months. You know, we've paid some bills in July, we've paid some bills in August, and tax collection season doesn't start for another month. So August is always the smallest amount of money we have. You'll see, this is probably a smaller amount than you would if you went back last year, two years ago, because we are utilizing our savings accounts in essence for the capital project. We're paying the capital project before we're going out to borrow and getting that money and doing stable financing. So we're using that for cash flow purposes. So you will notice August is significantly lower than the previous August, and the previous August than that. So we're just waiting, probably next year we'll have some permanent financing in place for the 2016 project.
Any other questions? Okay, may we have a motion, please, to accept the August Treasures Report? By Mike, in a second, by Mike, all in favor? Mike says yes.
I'm just going to transition, because I threw together some kind of preliminary budget slides for everybody, that I'll navigate from over here.
The Budget Development Calendar is next.
Yep. No, I think I'm good, thank you. So just to point out a couple major dates in the budget process, you know, we've already started our budget process. We've already started our budget process, we've gotten our documents out to our buildings and our department team leaders to start having those conversations around budget. But really, the most important thing, a part of our budget process, is the tax levy limit and the tax cap. We really don't talk about expenditures until we talk about revenues. The process from the time I started in school finance has changed, I think, drastically with the institution and the tax cap. It's no longer about expenditures, it's all about revenues. And then finding the expenditures to match to revenues, where previous to that was vice versa. So we get a first draft of that February 6, just point that out, the first proposal to you and the community will be February 6, because remember, it's a nine-part formula, and those parts to the formula that we get from the state are starting to trickle in now. So I have to put that all together, and the last part comes usually mid-January with the governor's budget. So February is the earliest we could take a look at that draft. And then we have to submit it March 1 to the comptroller and to SED. But we can always make changes through April in that, but that's the first round that goes out to everybody. We have two workshops planned on the 5th and 19th. Budget adoption is currently scheduled for April 16. But it's important to note, the last legal day to adopt is April 27, should something happen. We did this about two years ago, when the governor and the legislature refused to release state aid runs. So we had a date for adoption, we had to back that up. I think we backed it up another week till we got those aid runs and can finalize the budget. Soon after that, the property tax report card is due the next day after we, as a district, adopted our budget. But also the last day was then April 27 to do that as well. And then the board vote is this year, it's going to be on May 19, a little later than last year. Last year, I believe, was May 15, so the clock calendar has kind of changed a little bit. Our budget hearing is scheduled for May 7, and our budget required documents should be hitting everybody's mailbox that May 1 as well, timeframe for this year. So that's the structural part, dates, important notes on our budget calendar and for you guys to take a look at and see, and do you want to add or delete anything as we move forward as part of the process? Remember, it's very state-driven, so as the winds change in Albany, it trickles down to us as well. And, you know, every year, there's always a little nuance that we'll have to adapt to, so. Any questions?
Have you learned anything from the roundtable discussions that have been going on around the state?
A few things, I think we could talk about that in the slides, you know, I think the most important thing I've learned, when we get there in state aid, actually, I could skip to that right now. So we're just going to go over, you know, some of these items, what early to expect. I think the most important part about state aid right now, that I've learned in a hearing, is the last bullet. Webster, we are outside the realm of power right now. We are represented by the minority in the Assembly and in the Senate. So, you know, history always bodes well for those districts that are in those areas. So it worked out for us, because it used to be shared power and we were covered by one, but, you know, to me, that's the largest thing that's coming out of it. What's, you know, are we the constituents of the people in power? And our, you know, year after year, we've seen, there was 11 different formulas added last year. Some are written very specifically for some very specific districts. You know, will we ever get one of those? I'm not hopeful of that ever happening because of that. But just as a reminder, when it comes to state aid, we're 8.3 million short on the foundation aid formula for this year compared where we should be. So we're not getting full funding for all our pupils.
Okay, that's a bug.
It bugs me a lot, too.
So, what would you suggest we do?
Well, I think the advocacy efforts, the Monroe County School Boards, the Webster Board.
But I mean, we can't, going to our representatives, what you're saying wouldn't be...
I'm not saying we can't do that, but I think the...
Yes, but what you're indicating is that it wouldn't be that official.
The political reality of it is, that's the reality that our district is involved in.
Yes, but...
I am going to Albany with you.
But there are some people who are supposed to represent everyone.
Correct. And I mean, we all, we have voices on the Education Committee and, you know, some of our other, you know...
Yeah, but they're not going to write a special formula for Webster.
Correct. I would not see that coming.
No, no.
Yeah, it would be very nice, but I do not see that coming. So I don't expect the formula to have major structural changes in it this year, or allow it to run to recoup some of that. Last year, we received the smallest percentage in Monroe County. So I'm also a little bit more cynical, because I'm coming off of that budget cycle.
Sure.
Where we got 0.8%, and I got to put a chart up there, showed Webster all the way to the left, and then the steps kept going for everybody else.
Right, right.
So, you know, my prediction is the governor will try to negotiate with stuff we already get, how every year he tries to cap the expense-based aids, and we'll have to fight to break that, and that's like a win for us, but it's something we've always had, it's nothing new. You know, when it comes to building aid as well, those attempts will be made. So as far as state, it'll be very interesting to see. I'm going to be very interested, when we go to Albany in December, what they have to say and what they're telling us.
Right, see who we can get meetings with.
Correct.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Some of the tax revenue, last year the cap was 3.35. So we did, we do do well on the cap, because we have growth. And CPI was above 2%, so we default to 2%, expect it to stay above there. So those are two huge parts of the formula which help us. Tax-based growth factor was 1.4% last year. Ours just came out, and we're at 1.35, so a little less than last year, but we are the second highest in Monroe County. So we're still trending a high. Just as a reminder, every 1% increase in the levy raises roughly $1 million in new revenue.
So Brian, if we're short again to 8 billion, how do you close the gap when you have a cap?
That's money we've, that's money we've never gotten, it's money that, if the formula goes as it's intended, we would be 8.5 million to the better. I mean, you could do, that's how the formula, so when I look at the formulas every year, formula should give us this, the state says, nope, we're going to change it and give you this. So the formula that every district has, ours worked in essence capped or shorted that amount of money. Based on all of our demographics, all of our financials, our student population spits out this, the state changes it.
So it's not really a gap?
Correct, it's not, it's a shortfall. Of all the, it's a shortfall of the potential revenue we could have. Pension systems?
That we should have.
That we should have. TRS and ERS, where are we going right now? TRS is projected to be somewhere between 9.25 and 10.25 of salaries. Depending on where that lands, that's a 4.4 or 15.7 over last year's rate, which is 8.86. So that swings, that could add 300,000 to a million dollars to the budget. I think it'll land closer than 9.25, because stock market gains have still been good. They've changed some of their actuarial values and how they operate the system, so I think that has a little bit more to do with why the pension increase is going. The employee retirement system, it's going to stay the same, 14.6 to 14.6. Might be a small budgetary increase for us, once I calculate what the salaries are, because it's all based on our reported salaries, where that number comes from. So potentially a small impact with just staying flat based on salary increases, because everybody that makes minimum wage in the district is an ERS pension liability. Benefits, retiree plans have gone up 9%. Active plans, 8.5%. Why are they going up? We'll get into more specificity with this later on. Just as a heads-up, New York State mandates on healthcare this year to all, plans offered in New York State have about four to five very expensive things that are mandated to be covered, that were not before. So those, and they're very expensive. Not that they're, it's right or wrong, but now they're mandated to be covered by part of plans, for instance, like in vitro fertilization, those things, freezing of, you know, medical stuff. You know, those are now mandated. And what I was, you're the science, I need your help with the science.
Medical stuff.
So, yes, is all required now, so, yes, that is, those are cost drivers in the healthcare market.
With the AED machine...
With the AED machine right now for Sue.
Now, that's medical stuff.
Yeah. See, don't we should leave?
You can follow Sam.
Yeah. So, that's where we are with benefits, you know, you'll see, we'll see how that plays out once open enrollment wraps up. We do know there are some early budget stressors that we have going on already as we sit here in November for next year. Special education, already know that out-of-district placements for BOSI's are increasing as well as private placements. Could sit here and tell you, you know, on November 14th, this is going to be an increase in the budget for next year. Transportation as well, our private contracts are going up due to increased need and capacity that we just can't do. So, we're, we've contracted with private as well. For many of those are for special education placements for students going to private placement. So, those are two early things I want to get out of the gate with that you'll see as part of the budget process. They're areas that we're going to look, need to address.
And are we contracting with more private buses? Is this an increase?
We had gone away from it. We had been, we just contracted with Monroe One, but we had also used another partner three, four years ago. But we had gotten to a point where we, our recruiting efforts with transportation had worked, we were good with bus drivers. And we're doing a lot of things in-house. But unfortunately, we've gotten to the point where there's so many stresses and demands on out-of-district placements, specialized placements, that we just couldn't handle and had to look to outsource again.
Is that where most of our contracted?
Transportation would be for these special placements?
Correct, yep.
It's not for, you know, we don't have enough for this team and that team?
It would be for those special areas. You know, a student moves in, is attending a private setting, similar like a Mary Carriola. And so, we would need to transport out to Mary Carriola, so. Okay, so I already talked about our budget process. And just as a reminder, we did move last year due to the ESA reporting and the transparency reporting to a per pupil, per building allocation. Every building gets allocated at the elementary, middle, and secondary. There are extra funds for some specific programs, but we did that for the reporting because we have to report by building. So, we had to have, it seemed to make sense. But we still adhere to that zero-based budgeting philosophy. Because even though they get an encompassing amount, they have to justify every, what those lines and where they're allocating it for. Questions? Sorry.
Mike, they're not usually like this.
This is great.
Yes, right.
Scaring you off. We do have a good time, okay.
I roll like three hours in.
Cry, like we, it's required to cryogenically freeze cancer patients, you know, yeah, like if one of the thing...
Not the entire cancer patient?
No, not the...
Just stop.
Cryogenically freeze is now required to be covered under medical plans. Try my best.
All right. Okay. Thank you for that, Brian.
Glad I could help.
Looking forward to the budget season.
Moving on, New York State School Board Association. Rochester was the host city of the 100th convention. And if everyone just, we can just circle around and everyone can share what they want to share about the convention, what their takeaways were. If you want to, I know you were able to go a little bit and meet a few people. And nice introduction for the first day on the job.
So, second day on the job, I was at the New York State School Board. My feeling was they were very good sessions. I attended things that I wasn't as familiar with around the mental health and security. And those really shed some light on some of the issues that school boards and school districts across the state are facing. So, it's a good learning opportunity for me.
Maria, do you have anything?
It was my first time too, and I thought it was, I thought the first three sessions on Friday were outstanding. Especially Jefferson's Children, the story of one American family. Shannon Lanier was Thomas Jefferson's sixth-removed grandson. And he's African-American because, well, because his mother was African-American. The supervale evaluation was outstanding, I think we should look into it, I really do. And so was trans-trauma-informed schools, that was given by the Collins, it was excellent too. I wasn't too thrilled with Saturday, but, sorry.
Well, one of the sessions that I went to that I was quite excited about, and some people know because we've passed down their whole file and whatever, was the homework session from North Rockland. Where it sounded much like our study for start time, only they had a three-year study involving all staff, community, students, et cetera. And it's not that they don't have any homework, they were very clear on that. They, but they have a very, very different approach to homework and it's called home learning. But, as I say, this process had multiple committees. The Board of Education served on several students, surveys, parents, a steering committee. They brought in experts. What I wanted to pass on to our own district, which I did, is some of the leading authorities and some of the books that they use that's been written on homework and on the links to all the research. John Hattie is the one who's done the most research on homework in the elementary school. So, it was excellent. And I think we have our own district committee, if they use some of these same people or contact North Rockland, I think you don't always have to reinvent the wheel. Sue and I went, of course, to the policy meeting, and since she's our policy guru, I guess I'll let her speak on that. Then I also attended, which I think several other people did, some sessions basically on school boards. One was called School Board Are You Listening? Talked a lot about community forums. I think I came away with some good ideas that I would share at another point. I thought the workshops were very worthwhile. Sue, you want to talk about policy?
Yes, I would just like to affirm what Maria said about the trauma-informed school by Shamika and Isaac Collins. That was very good. Yes, the seminar that we went to was called Hot Topics in Policy. It was an audience participation seminar where people talked about what they were talking about on the policy committees. Hot topics.
Yeah.
Included vaping, smoking, bullying, harassment, and students' free speech. The few takeaways I took were that, you know, you need to make sure that your policies reflect your current practice. Schools do have a right to censor things that happen in the school if the district contributes financially to that. Like if the district is paying for the newspaper, then they can, if they so choose. A couple things, you know, they talk, people always talk about school districts or school boards operating at a 30,000-foot level. And somebody pointed out that they really felt it should be a 10,000-foot level, that SED is really the 30,000-foot level and more than 10,000. And then there was actually a school district that has their own policy committee motto. Yes, they have their own motto.
T-shirt.
T-shirt, exactly. Say what, I'm getting to that, Mike. Say what we do and do what we say. So, that's what their policy committee is, it's their motto. And, so, and as I was sitting there thinking of t-shirts, audit may be awesome, but policy is powerful.
That's a t-shirt.
Yep. So, and I won't bore you with the resolution business meeting, I'm sure you got all, I sent you a summary and then I'm sure you got one from the state. The one thing that we all agreed on was that, no, we did not want to lower the age for bus drivers to 18.
Right.
But all in all, it was a good conference and it did validate a lot of things that we do, yeah. Oh, there was debate on that one. They thought, well, there's a shortage of bus drivers that would be a way to alleviate it. And we're all just sitting there thinking, oh my gosh, no, we're not going to do that.
One state is offering it to staff members to get...
Oh, really?
Yes, Indiana, I think, to get their license and drive the kids.
Anyway, thank you.
It was a great convention. The only thing specifically I would share is there was a session led by Kathy Dillon and Mike Soffaletto, President and Past President of Monroe County School Board Association, talking about challenges facing school boards. And strategizing within a group, what to do and how to address. And that was really meaningful because it was just coming from other ordinary people, just like us, facing certain struggles and wanting to do right by our district and right by our students and right by our teachers and administrators, right by everyone. So, that was really very eye-opening to think that the challenges that face school boards face all school boards. So, I appreciated that. That's all, Ed.
I went to many of the same sessions that Maria and Jan went, but a few that I want to point out was, I went to one that was called Planning Seeds of Diversity and Equity. Now, Fairport was the one that was doing it, so Brett Prohman, I don't know many of us know him, he was the presenter. And I have to tell you that here in Webster, we're trying to do exactly what Fairport is trying to do. So, I felt good that we're on the same page. I also went to one about redefining readiness, which is one of the questions I asked the people this afternoon. What happens when we don't use readiness anymore? How do we assess? And that was all about it, and I sent you a chart that showed how it would look, how it would be. And Jan, I did send to the homework committee all the research, I sent that already. And one that was, Maria and I went to and it wasn't so good was how to avoid election vote challenges. Maybe this would have been for Cindy, but we seem to be doing everything right. Right. And I gotta complain, there's no way that Sue can get done with a meeting before we get done. I just, I've never seen that happen before. Anytime I've been in, I've always been there past, way past 12 o'clock.
People were very considerate by not repeating what everyone else was saying. It used to be, you know, they'd line up at the mics and this person would say this thing, and then they'd keep repeating it over and over again. But they were, they were very good about that, so, it was good.
It was unbelievable. We go down and we see your car already, I said, oh my gosh, how did that happen? Okay, that's my report.
So, our own, no, thank you. Our own professional development on the heels of our districts. Moving on to the first reading of Policy 4150, Loss or Destruction of Property.
Yes, this is a new policy. It was recommended by our Assistant Superintendent for Business, Brian Freeman. He suggested this policy because it can be an issue and we want to make sure that when there is a loss or damaged property, whether it's personal property or district property, that it's being handled consistently throughout the district. So, I don't know if you have any questions about it, but this is the first read. It's been approved by our attorney. Does anybody have any questions? Somebody want to make a motion to approve?
To accept the first reading?
Accept first reading.
Mike, second by Linda?
I'll in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Ananamous motion carries, thank you, Sue.
And moving on to our board reports, school liaison reports. Typically, we go around the table and share what's new. Want to start over? You probably, I know you haven't been to any schools yet. Maria, if you want to share about DeWitt?
The DeWitt Dash raised $17,000 for DeWitt, it's their only fundraiser of the year. Actually, they raised like, they raised like 26, but... On Friday, November 8th, the board participated on a learning walk at DeWitt. Students and staff started the day by celebrating Veterans Day, it was amazing. The morning assembly honored veterans by inviting three Vietnam War veterans as guests of honor. One of whom was, in attendance was Principal Mark Schickel's father. Yeah, that was really, it was great. They also invited retired music teacher, Mr. Al Heary, to lead the students in 50 nifty United States. A group of students played taps and grade-level representatives shared messages of gratitude to veterans. And then we visited Ms. De La Petra's kindergarten class, and we participated in her morning meeting, which was also really good. Engaging, informational, and very collaborative with the kids. Construction has started on the outdoor classroom by the Geotech students. And as a result of a student input from the DeWitt, they plan to add a small library in the classroom. Red Ribbon Week, open house and the book fair worked success. Upcoming events are DeWitt Gives Back on November 15th, Bus Driver Appreciation Day on November 18th, the DeWitt Holiday Shop, December 3rd through 6th, and the 4th and 5th grade winter concerts on December 17th. And the next PTSA meeting is on December 9th at 6 o'clock in the DeWitt Library.
Thank you. Jan?
I'm the liaison for Clem North, and the last meeting was on a Thursday, so, November 7th, so I couldn't go. I did submit a report and I told them all about our new board member, Mike. And I told them about in my report on the convention that we all attended and a few other things. But I did get to go at the end of the week on the 1st of November to their rock concert in the morning. And Maria went and Mike went, and it was fantastic. It was the culmination of a week-long fall festival. And they had this concert first thing in the morning, and oh my, the kids loved it, it was, it was just really great. And they, yes, the people did it for free, I may add. So, during the week of Fall Festival on the 29th, they had trunk or treat, as a lot of schools did. I didn't go, but Mike, you said you drove by and there were many people there. They also had this apple tasting during the week, and I should give a big thank you to Schute's Apple Farm that volunteered, that provided all of the apples and all those volunteers that came in and cut them up so that every day in the cafeteria, students got to try a different apple and then vote on it or write whether they liked it or didn't like it, or whether it was, you know, various things about it. And I thought that was a great experience for them. And of course, they had Red Ribbon Week, they had a very successful Yankee Candle fundraiser. Right now, this week is Scholastic Book Fair, it started on the 12th and will go through next Tuesday on the 19th. And for those of you who like to plan your calendar ahead, the winter concert is December 17th at Willink. And we are looking at changing the next PTSA meeting probably to the 10th so that they're not always going to be on Thursday, so I can go. So, and I did go to State Road the other day with, and then Tammy joined us, and that was fun to go there.
So much fun.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, for Schlegel Road School, they had their annual craft fair on Saturday, November 2nd. And it was a great success, run by, well-run, had a lot of volunteers, high school volunteers, they were Rotary members. A nice variety of craft items and a great way to spend a Saturday. Their 3rd grades are hosting a book drive for the Rochester Discovery School, and they're currently accepting new and used books. Well, we're not usually this late, so I was going to say that there, remind people that Leo's Pie Pickup is tonight. But it's over at 8 o'clock, so I guess I'm a little late. And... And they have a winter concert... And they have a winter concert on Thursday, December 12th. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. State Road's Pete, recent, excuse me, PTSA meeting, they announced their numbers for the Leo's Pie fundraiser as well. Well over $5,000, so that was enormously successful. And what they hope to do also is a way to promote PTSA and the value of what they do for families is host a dance February 7th without charge to families to attend. So, just as a way to give back and a way to encourage people to see the value in PTSA and all the good things that they do for the students at State Road.
I am Plank South, and the meeting was held on November 6th and Maria came with me. It's just a really great group of, of parents this year. They have a lot of, they had a lot of activities going on. I was invited in on October 15th to see author Kelly Di Puccio speak to the students. It was amazing. She was so inspiring, told all the students that everyone is an author and never to give up. She had over 200 rejection letters that she actually brought in and showed the kids. It took six years for her first book to be published, but now she's got well over 20 books that were published. So that was pretty awesome. She had on a cart probably close to 300 books that she was autographing just for Plank South. So, pretty amazing, wonderful visit. Trunk-or-treat was on October 27th. There were over 100 cars and about 200 students that were there. That's, um, they work together with Plank Road North. That was the ninth year that it's been held. The weather actually cleared for a very short period of time, although it was windy, so the kids were able to trick-or-treat. This past week, or last week, I'm sorry, they had Mark Rust in the music classes. He was showing the students all different instruments. Open House was tonight with the book fair. They will be having auditions for their drama club performance of Frozen 2. The Holiday Shop will be held December 9th through the 12th. And the annual school 17 gift donations has begun gun. They will be collecting gifts throughout the next few weeks. The gifts will be delivered on December 18th. They haven't figured out who's going to be Santa this year yet, because Scott used to do it. So, not sure who will do that. And also, there was something, shout out to Sean Striggi for athletics. As we were walking down the hallways in Plank Road South, there were pictures that were poster-sized of warriors, graduating warriors with young warriors. It was awesome. It's really, and to see, the kids also love to see pictures of people they recognize themselves. So, great shout out to him for doing that. And the next meeting will be on January 9th.
Last night, Clem South had their PTSA meeting. And I'll thank you, I have to go out to Herman's for, for providing donuts and cider at a reduced cost for their open house. Clem South had also had a very successful VIP dance, and they had a Leo's Pie fundraiser, very, very successful. Like everybody here, they raised a lot of money. There is a holiday party scheduled for Saturday, December 7th, starting at 9:30 in the morning. The school is also looking at the possibility of a talent show at the end of January. And, and we need to congratulate the 5th graders at Clem South because they put out their first edition of the Penguin Press. Now, this is a newspaper published by 5th graders that they hope that, that will be published four times a year. So, congratulations for them. And, and, um, Mike and I, I, I don't know if anybody else also went at, at the Veterans Dinner. Thank you, go out to the middle schoolers at Spry for the Veterans Dinner that they hosted last Friday. And thank you, thank you, should go out to all the veterans who, who served our, our, our country. So that's my report.
Thank you.
I'd also like to add, November 2nd was the first, what will become an annual Hispanic Heritage event. Was a wonderful event, so well-attended. Many of us were there. And the entire Willink Cafeteria was filled with families, laughing, engaging, salsa lessons, crafts, food donated. It was really, really a very special event, so, first of many. And then also, the urban suburban cultural awareness meeting is on the 14th of November at West Arundicoyt High School, 7:00 PM. I hope to be able to get to that. So, thank you. And moving on, Monroe County School Board Association for the reports, Legislative Committee. Jan and Sue?
I went to the meeting, November 6th, last Monday. It was certainly a lot on the agenda because it was conference debrief, election debrief, advocacy trip, position papers, a lot going on. So Sherri reported, shared a number of changes that have happened at SED, including Shannon Deho, who's been named as the Commissioner of Education, and of course, some of our local people like Dr. Small, Leslie Small is going up to be the Assistant Commissioner of Office of Innovation and School Reform. We had, one of our committee members was elected a town justice, so he is leaving his school board in December. So, we had those kinds of things. We had a conference, convention debrief, all about, because of course, we were active in, in hosting a table there. Legislative appointments and updates. We've been meeting with various legislators, and there's one left on November 18th at 3 o'clock, and that'll be with Jamie Romeo in her office at 1800 Hudson Avenue, if anyone's going. The Albany trip, I think we've got four people going, Monday, December 9th. And then there were two position papers that were approved at the meeting that will now go on for final approval to Steering Committee and Exec. And of course, they're very timely. Impact of staff shortages on school district and bus drivers needed. Mike, I think you were involved in both of those, right? Yeah, if there's anything further you want, I mean, I just was involved in the approval part, but there's certainly important position papers, I would say, at this point. So that's it.
Thank you, Jan.
Yeah.
Labor Relations. Linda and Mike, if you have anything to share?
Just a reminder that Wednesday of next week, there's actually a double duty. Wednesday at noon is Labor Relations, and it's going to be about negotiations. And it's our own Akali Bolonos is, is going to be talking. And then at 4 o'clock, we have information sharing, and the topic is jewelry and e-cigarettes. And it's, it's a, again, it's a bunch of Webster people. Janine Sanger and Officers Hurley and Johnson, and Neil Flood will be talking. And then if you want to be really busy, you can, I'll go to Spry PTSA at 6:30.
It's a full day.
So I got a full day.
And, moving on, our standard, standing district committees. Audit.
We're gonna come up with a t-shirt.
Did you, you didn't have a-
We haven't had one since the last report.
And policies, Sue, do you have anything in, in addition to share?
No, our next meeting, our next meeting is December 5th at 5 o'clock.
Budget advisory, we'll continue to rotate, that seems to work well.
And we're working on dates.
Okay, okay. And strategic planning, we just had, that was an excellent meeting.
Yeah, we had a great meeting, I think it was, no, I think the 30th of October. Just talked about start times and helping our, you know, helping children with change. We talked about career connections, the board web pages, and futuring. And our next board meeting is, or our next meeting, I should say, is December 11th at 3:15.
Absolutely.
Yesterday was the monthly WEN, Webster Health Education Network meeting. They had applied for a grant that was due in July, and they heard back and they did not get the grant. However, apparently there is more money out there for, for these coal, these health coalitions. And so they're not out of the running yet, so they're waiting to hear feedback on that. So much of the focus was placed on writing the grant, that programming and other things kind of fell by the wayside just to put all their, their efforts into that. So they're looking to go back to planning more program, more programming and, and events. A couple of things that there, that they had was a couple of weeks ago, which a few, quite a few of us went to, was the opioid and vaping forum that was held at Willink. That was in conjunction with PTSA. They also partnered with Wegmans for the drug take-back. They don't have an exact amount of how many pounds of narcotics and other drugs that they took back, but they'll have that soon. So, the next meeting will be the second Wednesday in December, and we'll be looking for, to bring more programming in for the, the beginning of the year, and hopefully the grant will come through to continue all the good work, so.
All the good work. Just to back up to information exchange that was held in October, school and mental health partnerships. So we learned so much about how the need for kids to be seen by professionals and parents taking time off work and then needing to leave school to make these appointments happen, how the collaboration of bringing mental health satellites closer to districts where services are needed. And we look forward to a conversation from Colleen. I know we're trying to get together about that and learn more. We're already implementing some of that with great success. So that's an extremely important addition. Anything else? Okay, so with, oh-
Mike, are you able to go to Plank North, 10 o'clock Monday, PTSA?
10 o'clock Monday?
Yes.
Would you like me to go?
Well, Plank North is the only building that doesn't have, um, a license.
Can we discuss that tomorrow morning? I'm happy to go.
Absolutely. And sometimes we-
Is that the one that canceled the Halloween parade?
No.
Clem North.
Because I, I can go with you if you want.
We'll work, we'll work out, we'll work out that schedule. Okay, so moving on, final item is our consent agenda. Everyone's had a chance to review. Any questions? Can we have a motion, please, to accept the consent agenda? Linda, second by Jan, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and before we adjourn, just a couple brief things. Happy birthday yesterday to our superintendent. Yes. And a welcome to Maria's new grandson, just officially today, in the wee hours of the morning. And finally, just a, a wish to all of our families for a happy and safe Thanksgiving. We're grateful for everyone and all the work that they do for all the students in our district, and hope everyone enjoys your family at this special time. Thank you, have a good evening.